The more we see of them, they're still hanging around. I got an update yesterday on a lot of them. There's a couple dummy bills up there, so you have to be very careful with those. They could turn into something very dangerous or not so good for most of the 169 municipalities. So everybody's keeping a close eye on these. But the testimonies did go well and I will be doing a video, a short video with Sam Romeo on Saturday to put out there, to join these other towns that are making statements that support, you know, local decision-making. And we're very proud. We have a story to tell here in Greenwich, a good one. And so we're going to continue to, to build upon that good story. So we're not just saying, no, we don't like these bills. We're telling what we're doing in its place. In spite of some of the editorial writers in certain papers around the state taking exception to that, we're proud of it. And we're going to continue to showcase our record and continue to work towards that 10% affordable housing mandate. We're not deterred at all, but we're certainly going to fight any attempt to erode local control. And we'll hope to bring something back to the board in a couple of weeks as far as the statement goes. Update on the bike paths in town. I reached out to Jim Michael yesterday. With all that's going on, that hasn't really started yet, but it is on Jim's schedule. And I also reached out to Bob D'Angelo, who said he'll do his own research and help us with the paths. So we want to get some, the idea is to get, identify some roads, even where most of our roads are not wide enough for bike paths, but we want to get some type of signage on the roads there to show people that they're sharing the road with bikes and to make it a little bit safer. You know, it's not easy, but we're going to do all we can to make that come to fruition. Summer events, like last year, we're pushing, we're looking at events 45 days out and making a hard call 30 days out. It's looking better and better for all of these events. Some have already, that were scheduled for the spring have been pushed back to late summer, which is great. There, I've talked to a few people, spoke with a few people recently who in the last week who want to put on some events in the middle of summer. So we're just, you know, we think they'll be able to hold them, but we're just being careful. And so we're going to again, give everybody a look 45 days out. If you have an event you want to hold during the summer, just let us know and we'll, you know, go through the proper protocols, but also we are going to again, look at 45 days out with a hard, hard decision 30 days out. So everybody can, can be prepared. We had a Zoom yesterday. Lauren was on it with the Glenville group for the Glenville plan. It's really exciting. Our goal, as we said in 2019, was to address each part of town and really enhance each town, each part of our, of our 67 square miles. And Glenville's now up in the queue and they're, they're really energized and preparing and working with the town for a public-private partnership to really enhance the streetscape in Glenville. I know Lauren and I walked it last year a few times and had some ideas and that's going to, they'll be incorporated into the overall plan. So we thank those advocates and volunteers in Glenville as well as PBW and Jim Michael specifically. We are planning an Old Greenwich public hearing like we did last year for Central Greenwich. It's later this month and we've been, Old Greenwich has had a little bit of a standoff there because, you know, seems like one half the merchants wanted some, you know, to, to go in a different direction. The other half seemed to not want to do anything because they were afraid of losing parking. So we want to really hear from a wider range of people who live in that area to get their thoughts on it and try and come to some type of plan to get them jump-started. Already, as we saw last year, a couple of the restaurants went outside and did really well and love it and will be out there again this year. But we really want that to be open to all, whether it's other restaurants or merchants. But, you know, there's always that parking issue, which is, you know, it's ever-present and all over. So we have some ideas there too, but we also want to hear from the people and hopefully we'll arrive at a place where we could actually get the ball moving forward down in Old Greenwich. And lastly, the I-95 committee has set up a meeting this afternoon with DOT. I was already briefed on what they're going to be presented on and it's, it's really exciting around 95. They're doing all they can to mitigate the past negative effects of tree clearcutting there, but also looking forward and working with us and asking us now, I mean, I, it's amazing because for, for years and years and years, there was always a hard no. And now, and not only is DOT working with us, they're actually calling us. I got a call from my former colleague and friend Senator Leoni, who works at DOT now and he's, you know, he saw the letter to the editor by Cheryl Dunson and he wanted to know if everything was okay and what they can do. And it's really a great working relationship now. So I can't thank everybody who's written a letter, who's made a call, who's serving on the I-95 committee. Again, we're going to be meeting today to hear an update from Susan Fiedler of DOT. So lots of good things going on with that. I'll turn it over to select woman Raven. Good morning, Lauren.
Morning Fred. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Just to piggyback, we actually got an email suggesting that we do detail a little bit more of some of the things that we're working on at the Board of Selectmen meetings. And then I spoke to Fred and Jill. We'll probably concur, maybe we can do a little bit more information in the weekly community connections on some of the committee work that, of the committees that Fred has established. So we'll endeavor to do that. As it relates to the Glenville Greenscape Committee, just to piggyback on what Fred said, there is a project that is being granted some funding from CMAC. And then there's some additional funds that the town is putting forward to complete much-needed corridor improvements along Glenville Road and Pembwick Road, that intersection. If anybody's been there, it's, it's always been kind of a challenge to navigate. So then the committee is taking advantage of the opportunity that construction will be going on to make certain improvements to improve that Glenville Green area. We even are hopeful may put some wires underground since the ground is going to be opened up. So we know that anytime there's construction, we should try to endeavor to do that. There's also beyond what the, we can coordinate with the town, ideas on what to do with the green, working with the Tree Conservatory to add trees, as well as there's a town-owned building that is currently leased by the American Legion. Different uses for that building is some of the things that we're looking into. So excited to be part of that. The other committee, Reimagine. To just sort of sum it up, we started big and realized we needed to go a little bit small. I think some of the things we were looking forward to is raising funds to improve the aesthetics of the barriers for the nodes for the restaurants. We talked about tram trolley. They're not off the table, but we wanted to do some small things. We did have community projects come in front of us as the Board of Selectmen to think about adding American flags on top of the light posts. And our current thinking is to put on hold any ideas of putting sponsored banners on the light posts, but perhaps with the hardware still in place, our idea is to put community-related banners in place. So an idea we have is perhaps flags, patriotic flags starting for Memorial Day. So we're continuing to explore that. The ever dilemma about parking. This actually came out of looking at some of the maps, you know, for the residential parking and also the employee parking that we approved is we think that a lot of people in town and new to town may not realize how many 12-hour parking lots and spots that we have off of Greenwich Avenue. So we're thinking of putting together perhaps a map, you know, something not exactly like this one, but some little handout, even work with Park Mobile to see if there's a way to take advantage and, you know, do some advertising on the Park Mobile app and, and sell sponsorships that way to raise money for some of the initiatives that Reimagine is wanting to put forth. So those are some ideas in progress. And that's it for my update for today.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, select person Oberlander. Good morning, Jill.
Morning Fred. Good morning Lauren. Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Springtime, always so nice and looking forward to events for the summer and hopefully a little bit of a lessening of restrictions over time. I'll start with an update on the Sustainability Committee to Lauren's point about providing a little bit more detail. We do have minutes posted on the website, so anyone who wants to refer people to the committee and what we're working on, they can find our minutes on, on the website under Committees Appointed by the First Selectmen under Sustainability. But we've now started, something we've talked about before, a joint initiative with the First Selectmen's Diversity Advisory Committee to start talking about equity and inclusion and to start a community-wide dialogue. We're really excited about it. We've gotten fantastic feedback from community members that we've spoken to so far. Myself, along with, with one of the Conservation Commission employees and one of the resident volunteers, all attended Equity Training sponsored by Sustainable Connecticut, which was really, really terrific to provide a framework and how words matter. And I'm going to come back to that a little bit later as well. And there, this was a training provided to municipalities throughout the state. So we were able to learn and interact with other representatives, representatives from other municipalities who are also pursuing this process of equity and developing an equity statement. And we're learning from them as well. And we're so happy to have First Selectmen and Camillo's support on that effort. So stay tuned for over the next couple of months, we'll start developing more of a interactive dialogue, I hope, with community members to have these kinds of conversations. In addition, the Sustainability Committee will be working on publicizing some of the Earth Day events. Earth Day, Earth Week will coincide with our next Board of Selectmen's meeting and hopefully we'll have some resolutions to adopt at that meeting. I think that there's going to be a bell ringing again at noon as there was last year. There's a cleanup scheduled at Todd's Point for Live Like Luke and a number of other events that we'll be publicizing. So if you, if you don't otherwise hear from any of us and have a question, please reach out, but otherwise there should be some press going out on Earth Day coming up in topic of the news. On the, great to hear Fred about the bicycle shareos. I think most drivers are surprised to realize that bicycles actually share the roads and making it safe for both riders and pedestrians, especially as we head into spring, especially as people are much more conscious of being outside and active. Really, really important that we're aware of everybody around us. So make sure to put down your phones when you're driving and pay attention for cyclists and for walkers and really looking forward to working with Department of Public Works and you Fred, to make sure that we identify as many areas in town that we can make safer sooner would be, would be great. There was, in the Greenwich time yesterday, a, a letter to the editor on Mom's Rules, actually, which of course that headline caught my eye. And we're always working to improve ourselves. And I, I don't remember whether this was one of them, but in thinking about conversations at the Board of Selectmen and my report, I, words matter. That, that rule, I don't know whether that was specified specifically. I meant to go back and look it up or whether that's an additional one. And I'm, I'm really grateful that this board is, is one that allows for respectful dialogue. Even if we don't share the same point of view, there's, we're all entitled to speak and, and participate and and I was reminded of it again during the League of Women Voters wonderful presentation on some of the zoning positions that are being presented across the state. They had a great panel and I believe it's available for viewing if, if people didn't see it. Fred alluded to some of the legislation that's being proposed. It's really important to get everybody's point of view out there on the table and have respectful dialogue about what the options are. And I was really heartened to hear that some of the proposals that there's been a lot of rhetoric on don't actually impact Greenwich to the degree that that was initially suggested. And that's largely because of Greenwich's great or existing zoning provisions and also work so far. So I agree Fred, wholeheartedly with, with you that we should be showcasing, showcasing what a fantastic community we are, how far we've come. And we should be working to develop appropriate language and solutions and respectful dialogue on how do we get to where we want to be as a community? And I know that there are so many out there who also agree with that. So as we head into these next couple of months, as we read some of the articles in the paper, let's all try to remember that words matter and how we interact with each other matters too. And I thank Lauren and Fred as my colleagues for engaging only in productive conversations here at this board, which is really, really heartening, I think, for everybody. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Jill. I really appreciate that. And yeah, we're, we absolutely, you know, we can't be satisfied. We, you know, the town's done really well in these areas, but we, you know, we never want to be satisfied. We want to keep shooting for a higher goal. So thank you for saying that. And yeah, maybe offline, if we can get some, there was a couple of roads that were brought up to me about probably, you know, possibly being wide enough, but there was always something, some type of obstacle, you know, prohibiting the town from doing it in those areas. But I still hold out hope there's a couple of roads that are wide enough, but either way, I think we can absolutely get working on the the signage on the roads in a nice way. That's a, doesn't look bad and that will just remind people that they're sharing the road with, with others who are not in cars.
Yeah. Just, just to highlight also that we're all now so conscious of making sure we don't discuss town business offline. So some of our conversations at the Board of Selectmen end up being conversations really because we don't talk about these issues outside. So I just wanted to point out that some things that people might think are, why are you talking about that now here? And it's just not our only opportunity really. So anything from town issues.
Yeah. Thank you. People don't realize, we could, we could actually all go out to lunch and everything, it's all can all discuss town business and people, they get confused. It's a well-intentioned regulation, but it does sometimes, you know, handcuff us a little bit in our abilities to communicate, but we're, we do the best we can and you've both been terrific about adhering to that and doing the best we can with it. So thank you. Okay, we'll go right, get going with the meeting. We're going to, we just have one item on old business and we have Margaret Goldberg here from Neighbor to Neighbor. Good morning, Margaret.
Hi, good morning. I don't know if you can see me on a visual, but can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I can hear you, but your video is.
Okay, there we are. Good morning, good morning. And thank you for this opportunity. It's so wonderful to see and to learn something new each time I join on a Zoom. We certainly do have a very thoughtful and thriving community. It's very heartening to see. So thank you. Should I bring you up to date on a couple of things or are there any general questions that you'd like to ask of me or how should we?
Just, I want to thank you for, for coming back and I want to thank Kyle Silver also for coming back. I was concerned by our conversation last, last Board of Selectmen meeting and that, that we don't have a contingency plan as a community for Neighbor to Neighbor. And so for those of you watching, I asked for an update to make sure that, that this does not get overlooked, fall through the cracks. And so, so Margaret, if you could, and, and subsequent to our last meeting, I also had a number of conversations where people did ask questions about both the operation, the specifics of the operation, as well as other contingency planning. So if you could bring us up to date on, on whether you have found an alternative location so far. And, and then, then I have a couple of questions that I would like to ask you.
Sure.
Yes, and I could also clear up some things from the town side. I think some things are getting out there that may not be totally true. So I, oh, Mark, I absolutely want to, I look forward to your update, but I also want to say a few things too. So thank you.
Sure. And it's, I think, been an emotional and informative-driven space. So just to give you an idea of where we are at this point with regards to our search for a new site. We have reached out to various community members, of course, starting with Christ Church Campus. At this time, I still understand it to be closed to the public. They are addressing their own needs in terms of how they want to reopen their space. The ample space that we would need is just not available. And the location doesn't seem to be suitable for the numbers that we serve, which are essentially about 80% or more. We've also started construction of our new facility on the site. Reaching out to commercial space, there have been some suggestions and discussion, but nothing has come to fruition yet. Various community entities and organizations, we've had a conversation with Greenwich Skating Club. That was not suitable. Second Congregational, that has issues, especially particular to parking and traffic. North Greenwich, possible use of a large meeting space and professional kitchen, but it's something that the church council would need to consider for an extended use. And the location is a question. It's not centrally located. Round Hill Community House, we're still waiting to make introductions. Greenwich Public Schools, there is a large meeting room that possibly would be available at Havemeyer location. Only until the end of the summer, parking and traffic are concerns. Greenwich Country Day School, they do have a gym facility that would be available from mid-June to the end of the summer. Carmel Academy, there's possible use of a chapel, but there is a concern regarding lack of parking. It's a shared campus with a Japanese school in Hubble and the property right now is in transition between Carmel Academy and Chabad Greenwich. Both boards would need to support. Our use and approval would be needed for occupancy from the end of April to November. I certainly appreciate the amount of goodwill that's been extended from the above community partners. It's particularly heartwarming and we're extremely grateful. I just want to mention, and I'm sure Fred touched upon this, the new variant. It seems to be more contagious and spreading fast in the U.S. It seems that there's a vulnerability of the age groups of 11 to 20. Per a New York Times article and as articulated by Dr. Carlos Del Rio, "We knew that this was going to happen. This variant is a lot more transmissible, much more infectious than the parent strain, and that obviously has implications. In addition to spreading more efficiently, the B11 strain appears to cause more severe disease." Dr. Adam Laring, a virologist at the University of Michigan, shared that people were becoming less cautious at a time when they should be raising their guard against a more contagious variant. It's worrisome. I had the opportunity just to review a couple of things and, you know, Fred, I think maybe you can clarify this together with the, with Lauren and Jill. I think within the town agreement with our Street Teen Center, there was a clause that was included as far as emergency or public purpose termination of the lease, that the town reserves the right to reconsider the use of the premises and to determine whether there's a more urgent public purpose. I'm going to defer to our, our sound and professional leadership on the town to consider whether our current, what our current situation is right now to guide any next steps and especially as we continue to provide vital food service during this ongoing severity of COVID. So I'll certainly defer to our sound leadership from the town. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Margaret. If, if you wouldn't mind, I'd just like to, there were a couple of questions that people have asked me and I, I just want to clarify some of the information that you just gave. So just to make sure I'm getting the, the answers and the information correct. So one of the questions was whether a return to Christ Church was feasible. I think what you just suggested was that the campus is not open to the public. So that, because a secondary question is why, why is the food delivery operation still ongoing as a delivery as opposed to the pickup? Because my understanding was that pre-COVID and hopefully post-COVID, individuals and families used to come into the food pantry to pick up as opposed to receiving everything through a home delivery system. The home delivery system was implemented during the shutdown, but as things start to open up, you know, wouldn't it be possible for the variant notwithstanding, let's put that to the side for a second, but as things start to open up with people being vaccinated, wouldn't it be possible to go back to a pickup? So there are two separate questions. One is does Neighbor to Neighbor have any plans to resume a pickup operation? And even if it does, it sounds like Christ Church being closed to the public wouldn't be a location where you could operate out of.
Right, right. And this is where it sort of gets very complicated. So as we had mentioned before, our numbers are really stable at more than 80% of what we were initially. If anyone has visited our prior space at Christ Church, it is unsuitable. You, you don't have available space for people to come in to be able to serve 520 households each week. It's just not feasible. As I had mentioned earlier, we have the construction that's initiating now, if raises concerns around access to the actual campus itself. We are going to be starting our curbside delivery from Christ Church. We're going to be shutting that down from Orange Street. We have approximately 63 households that come for curbsides, so we'll be transitioning that to the Christ Church campus. We think that that's a first step in terms of transitioning a little bit to a state of normalcy of whatever that might be, but it's really the sheer numbers right now of individuals that we're serving. That's the challenge.
Yeah. So Christ Church has agreed that those, those 63 curbside families could come to the site to pick up?
I think it's something that we have discussed and decided operationally since we did have that kind of service previously in place. Yeah, I think it's reasonable enough to consider that we can resort and restore that.
Right. Even, even if the campus is closed to the.
Because we won't have anybody coming into any of the physical facilities. It will actually be a curbside.
And so then you will transport the bags of food from wherever your compiling facility will end up being to Christ Church for the pickup.
We, we still maintain our previous space. So I think we'll have to do a little bit of a transitioning in what we do have available. We'll just manage, or we'll just have to do the transfer, right, from eventual site.
And it sounds like from some of the other locations that you've been discussing, that some, some of them, you may be able to find coverage over the summer in some of the school facilities, Havemeyer or Greenwich Country Day School and even possibly Carmel. But, but the April 30th deadline is a hindrance because you still have a period from April 30th to mid-June. Or
That's correct.
That, that there's no continuity right now.
Right now, at this moment, there's nothing that's been confirmed to us and that's a problem.
Right. And so, and so that goes back to the idea of a possible short-term extension, if possible, at Neighbor to Neighbor or finding an alternative location for even that month and a half. So we're really talking about six weeks, four to six weeks, at least as an extension, as an emergency extension. I want to go back to my questions. One of the other questions that had been asked was, was commercial space to lease, you know, seeing that there have been a lot of vacancies perhaps. Is that, and I, and I know that this would consider, this would be considered a COVID
Related.
Related, I believe. And that's a question, I guess, to Ben. You know, does this fall within and whether there's, whether this is just an economic issue because one might be able to lease space, you know, I think that was another question I got. Is this just an economic issue? I mean, I understand, other than your personal time and time of your staff looking for space and relocating several times, does this just become an economic issue?
You know, we had mentioned to any one of the partners that had come up that we would certainly, as we have done with our Street Teen Center, we are covering monthly expenses of a few thousand dollars a month. So we would of course want to make sure that people remain whole, that they're not at a disadvantage here. Commercial space is of a different caliber altogether. I think it's really a subject to a negotiation that anybody, anybody might have with a particular agent or agency, but we've not made any active connection. Someone had actually mentioned that there's a lot of commercial space going into Stanford, which you know, we're serving our community. We have to be able to come up with something within the Greenwich area. So I think that we're exploring every single avenue. Every conversation has a possibility, but as we see it becomes more nuanced, there are a lot of different qualifications and conditions that start to make this a little bit more complicated than. that start to make this a little bit more complicated than a simple, you know, gee, can we come in and just use your space?
Right, and one last question for you, Margaret, and I see Lauren has questions too. I do have questions for Arch Street as well, but I certainly want to let, obviously, my colleagues ask their questions to you as well. In terms of the demographics of who you're serving, someone asked me about that as well, especially in the context of this pandemic and all of the other conversations that we're having about impact and equity. Can you just tell us a little bit more about the demographics of the people that are using your services? And what would happen if you had a period of discontinuity if you didn't have space between the end of April and, let's say, the end of June or middle of June?
So the breakdown would be as follows. We serve sixty-three percent Hispanic out of the totals households that we provide for, twenty-three percent white, ten percent black, four percent Asian. As far as an age breakdown, forty-two percent are under the age of eighteen, forty-two percent ages eighteen to sixty-four, sixteen percent over the age of sixty-five. By gender, fifty-six percent female, forty-four percent male.
And what happens if you don't have space at the end of the month?
I'm not sure how to answer that one, to tell you the truth. Right now, we have no commitment, and we're still trying to see if we can have a match, but nothing's come up yet. I don't know how to answer the question.
Okay.
Lauren, did you-
Thank you, Margaret. Yeah, I'm done. Thank you, Margaret, I appreciate not only you coming back, but I might ask you to come back again in two weeks.
Of course, anytime, anytime.
You're always welcome to come back. Lauren, before I speak, I have a couple of questions.
So I just want to clarify, because of the five hundred and twenty households and sixty-three come and pick up, does that imply that the remainder gets delivered?
Yeah.
Okay, so you don't necessarily need, close to the public is not necessarily, I'm just thinking, it doesn't really an issue if you're delivering or curbside pickup, because nobody's coming physically into the building?
Right, but, right, and I also just want to keep in mind that it's my responsibility as an employer to have a health and safety consideration for my work environment, for staff and volunteers. So, you know, that's an additional layer too that we try to be mindful of.
Yeah, I mean, public versus employees, I totally get that. Were you to connect with St. Paul's or St. - oh my God, Sacred Heart Church in Byram? Either of those, because they do have the empty schools. I had suggested that the last time you were here, so since you went through the whole list-
I know.
Why you didn't mention those. And then Fred, I had an idea, what about the skating rink? You know, let's, I think, the majority of the people that you serve may be on the western end of town, so I'm just giving you ideas for that part of town.
So the skating rink I could address, St. Paul's and Sacred, I can certainly reach out to. We had started with that as a suggestion, but it seems that there's just going to be an active flow of other groups and entities in the space. So then it would be a consideration of us maintaining the inventory in a secured spot. I think it got a little bit complicated, so with Joe Cecilianno, that's why we sort of went on to other suggestions. Just to remind everyone too, I had mentioned that the Horse Neck facility would be available to us, but we're looking into July on that space that's temporarily being used. So, you know, again, I think what's prime is that we don't want to unduly displace any other agencies. I want to emphasize that we are a good partner within Greenwich. We want to adhere to that kind of standard. So this is an open dialogue and communication, and how do we sort of resolve this little bit of a puzzle right now during this background of a pandemic? This is not an easy space for us to even think about or negotiate right now, so.
Any more, Lauren?
No, I just was curious about the suggestions.
Yeah, we could certainly follow up with that after the meeting. I think some of the, there's some other ones too. I've been making some calls in the last week, including three this morning regarding Neighbor to Neighbor. First of all, I want to thank, the town really stepped up, and I want to thank the Teen Center for allowing, you know, another great organization to use it in a time of a pandemic. It was really critical that they find a space, and we want to thank them for doing that, and also for extending this lease twice. You know, they've had to now make appointments, right? They have a lot of work to be done there, as Margaret knows, and their appointments are all in the next few months. And if we cancel that, then they're going to be pushed out, you know, until July and maybe into August. So we can't, we have to respect them. They've been really good partners here, and they've been very giving. So we extended it last, two weeks ago to the end of this month. So we, you know, I have no intentions of asking them to cancel all of their things that they have going on in the next two months there. It's critical that they get back there, and the kids and the programs, they've been waiting long enough too, so we're totally supportive of that. But I have been making some calls, and I know Margaret has too, because we've talked to some of the same people. Probably didn't know it, but we were, and there's lots of moving parts. Margaret's right, you know, just, there's been some private property owners that want to help, but we just have to make sure we're talking about the same thing and that it's approved by P&amp;Z. I want to circle back on the Arch Street, not Arch Street, Horse Neck locker, because, as you know, Ben met with Margaret there, for people who don't know. And so we're all on board with allowing you to stay there, but it's pending P&amp;Z approval. We were fairly confident, but you know, I don't want to speak for them or put words in anybody's mouth, but there's a reason why, you know, that wasn't meant to be a permanent structure there forever, but this is really something different, right? We're in the middle of, still, hopefully at the end of a pandemic, but we're still in it. And you need a little bit of a hand to get you over to the other side into your new place. So we are working every day on this to make sure that you have a place. And there are some other ones that maybe, I don't know if you've heard, I think we've probably- talked the most of the same ones, but probably even my church reached out to me, and I think they reached out to you, and there was a parking issue there. But there's a couple other ones, I think. So maybe if we can talk later today, if that's okay, and throw some things back, because there may be something we're missing, but we want to make sure you're secure next month somewhere, and we'll make it a priority. So to make sure that you continue your great works that you've done throughout this, I mean, before the pandemic, but you really provided something that was really, really needed, more so than ever before. So let's, I wrote it down, I'll give you a call. After our special meetings today, we have some interviews to do, but we have some ideas, and certainly we'll get working on it and make sure that you're taken care of.
I very much appreciate that. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks. I know Jill's been doing a lot of work on this too, so thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I still have some questions for Arch Street, actually. So I see you on, but I don't see your face. I don't know whether you can, whether you're participating just by audio, or you want to turn on the video as well. Some of the questions that were raised following our last meeting was sort of, you could give us an update. I, you know, you had reported that you had some events planned. The reason why you couldn't extend even for a short period was that Arch Street had some events planned and as well as some building facility HVAC work. So if you could give us an update, both on those events and also the timing of the HVAC work, just to give you some context, that particularly in a pandemic, there were some question about both the events, but also, but the, you know, whether or not the timing of the HVAC work could be shifted to buy some more time. So especially in this crisis situation, the public purpose aspect of it. Thank you.
Sure, thanks so much for your time. And I actually, I'm in the process of moving this weekend. I'm in my place in Bridgeport, and I don't have internet services yet, so I'm only pulling off of what my phone allows. So unfortunately, you won't see my beautiful face, as I wouldn't like you to, but you will hear my voice here. And also, just a side note, that biking plan is incredible. That's something that all the teens in town are looking forward to, and myself and so many people. So thank you so much for that initiative as well. That's really incredible. So this is where we are with the June events. We did take the initiative, and Fred worked with us on some ideas of where we could place these events, and we have moved the June events, that's the good news. What we're up against is, you know, we need two and a half to three months to get the space ready to even have our first event. And I say that because, you know, we've relocated eighty percent of our interior items to storage spaces off-site that we've been covering the charges of. So one, we need to move those back in, and that's going to- we have three large storage units that are completely at capacity, so to move those back into the space is going to take some manpower and some time. And during COVID, obviously, it's going to take probably twice as long as it usually takes normally. And we also have the work scheduled to start, certainly after the departure plan of the end of April. And then we've been told that will take at least two months to get in to fully do what we need to do. Because keeping in mind, we did miss our maintenance window last year when we extended the agreement with Neighbor to Neighbor to be in the space in August, when we typically would have done that. We missed that this year under those circumstances of it being occupied. So we're behind, and we need to catch up. And we also are in a place where we have to, you know, we need the two to two and a half, three months to do that. So that's where we are. I just have one question in sort of hearing all this back and forth, and I sort of, it just struck me, and I guess it's a question for Margaret, is the developer of the new property, considering, you know, they're so far behind originally, and that's sort of what threw the glitch into the system to begin with, has anyone reached out to them for help as to a new place during the downtime?
I think, good question always, Kyle, but I think that we've had so many threads of contact and introduction. We're in constant contact with the developer, but nothing in particular. It's actually an individual home builder, so I think it's of a different scale and perspective. But we're certainly investigating all avenues, for sure. I want to assure you of that. And I just want to, you know, if I can, just mention something. Kyle and I have had a very positive working relationship, so I just want to establish that, that we've worked together cohesively during this period of time. And there were so many challenges from both of our organization entities, and I just want to make sure that everyone realizes that we've always had open communication between both of us throughout.
Yeah, and thanks to both of you. And of course, I should have started off with reiterating my thanks as I did at the last Board of Selectmen meeting to Arch Street for being a community partner. And certainly, I'm very well aware of the challenges to our youth. It has been an unimaginable year for anyone who deals with, knows of teens, actually. Won't even go into that discussion, so I'm quite sensitive to that. But I'm also sensitive to the idea that we have an immediate need in our community for food services delivery. And if it takes me begging in a public meeting to extend opportunities to a sibling not-for-profit in town that's serving an equally challenged group, that's not beyond me, actually. So I'm going to come back to Arch Street again, as I did last time, and see whether there have been conversations. I understand that there's got to be some approval process for any kind of work that's being done in the building. I don't know where that stands on the town level. I'm really just trying to piece together that six-week period or some portion of it that will buy a little bit more time for Neighbor to Neighbor. Their demographic is amongst the neediest in our community, and I know we're all pulling to get there and cooperatively. So I'm going to ask the Arch Street if they could go back to their contractor and see what they can do to modify the timetable, push it back a little bit, allow for a little bit more flexibility, just to buy us a little bit more time to find a space for Neighbor to Neighbor to manage this transition.
Thank you, Joe. Is Kyle still there?
I recognize that this is something that requires a little bit more work, but since, until we resolve it, I'll probably keep asking that if you put on the agenda. In fact, I'm going to ask right now, Fred, let's put it on the agenda for two weeks from now to get an update. I hope by then, there will be a contingency plan. I think it's as public, as a public board with a public facility being used and public needs on both fronts, both on the demographics, but also on the Neighbor to Neighbor demographics, also on the youth front, that it's incumbent upon us to work together to find some kind of solution. And I'm going to ask that we talk about it publicly until we get there, so.
We certainly can talk about it. Hopefully, maybe it will be settled by then, but we just heard, yeah, I know, we just heard, Kyle, that they're behind already, and why they're behind, and I don't want to put them in any more of a bad position. So my position has not changed, Jill. We really want to get them going there, and we're working with Margaret to find her a place. And we could always, always open to talk. So certainly, we could put it on, if there's an update to be had, we'll reserve a spot for it in two weeks.
Excuse me, Fred, we do have Icy friends with their hand raised. Would you comment on this?
Sure.
Icy, you are, if you can unmute, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Icy.
Hi, hi, everybody. I just wanted to say a big thank you, first of all, for discussing it. I've been, I'm the current Chair of the Board of Arch Street, and it's obviously been a difficult time for our town and for nonprofits. And I know that across the town, there have been agencies that have worked together to make this period of the pandemic a lot smoother. And I've heard that across the board, so I want to start by saying that. Second of all, I just want to say that, you know, we of the Arch Street so appreciate being there, and we're, have been so lucky to be able to share the space, not just Neighbor to Neighbor, but with other agencies in the town and other youth groups and just different groups along the way. And I think that has been great. I just, I want to say that in addition to what Kyle is stating about the work that needs to be done, which may not feel that necessary and important, we also want to get back to our mission. That's something we've had to put aside. And as Jill was saying, this has been a time that has been extremely difficult for our youth. And the moment, the quicker we can get our space up to speed, the quicker we can get our programs back going for our kids, even before the fall, when schools rejoin. So I love what Neighbor to Neighbor is doing, and I know how important and literally life-saving it's been at this time. I also believe in our mission, and I really believe in Kyle and the work he's doing, and even the work of the staff that we've had to let go during this time, that it makes a difference for the youth in our community. And I'm really excited that we're going to, given the new guidelines, and as we move forward with more vaccinations, be able to once again offer that to our community.
Thank you so much, Icy. Thanks for all you do there and for your involvement since the beginning. Certainly, you and Scott, that building wouldn't, you know, that organization, the Teen Center, wouldn't be around. So thanks to your good work, so thank you, and thanks for continuing to do that. Do we have any-
I just want to, I wanted to thank Icy for both her response to me personally, but also for being here today to talk about it. And I a hundred percent agree and support the return to mission. But as I said, I'm not above, I'm not, is it above? I'm not above, whatever the right terminology would be. I'm not above begging for more time, actually, for Neighbor to Neighbor, knowing that we all share the general good of the community. And if there's any way to negotiate or discuss with your contractor, whether it be consolidating work, adding extra hours, shifting the schedule, figuring out whether it's just a financial, you know, whether it's a timing issue, whether there's a financial issue, if we can buy more time, then- and it's a matter of weeks, I think, at this point. It's just buying a little bit more time. From what I heard from Kyle, you were aiming towards a- From what I heard from Kyle, you were aiming towards a move-in, you know, it's two to three months, aiming towards, and then additional time to move in. So you're sort of aiming for a school start or slightly before school start move-in. And so there's perhaps an opportunity to, as I said, consolidate work, maybe. And we could talk, you know, what that means exactly to allow for just additional time. And I would just ask that you please go back to the contractor and see whether there's any flexibility there. Thank you.
I have one last question. I apologize if I missed this from our last meeting. Is there, Margaret, you have some place to go to after June 30th? Because that's, the original conversation was to maybe extend this to June 30th. So now I'm not even sure. What are you doing after June 30th?
Right, so together with Ben and Joe Siciliano, we were able to identify that the Horse Neck Facility would be available somewhere around on or before July. And we would have an extended stay there. So, yeah.
Thank you.
That would be pending PNC approval, but, you know, we're, you know, we're hopeful on that one. So, yeah, so thank you. And it may be before that, maybe before July 1st. But we're, we'll continue to work at that. And thank you for coming on, Margaret. And Lauren and Jill, thank you for your questions and your concern and your ideas. And Icy and Kyle, thank you for coming on. Appreciate all that you do. We're blessed with wonderful organizations like Neighbor to Neighbor and the Teen Center. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Talk to you guys soon. Okay, thanks, everybody. Now, we're going to go on to new business. We have four items there. The first one, up leading off, we have the Greenwich Police Emerald Society request for a road closure. And we have Captain Jimmy Bonney and retired Lieutenant Tommy Keegan, TK. Morning, guys.
Captain, you need to unmute.
Okay, I don't have power here, but now they allowed me to unmute myself. Can you hear me?
We hear you, Captain. How are you?
I have a camera too, but I don't know why that's not working. Hold on a minute. I wish that they let me test this stuff before the meeting starts. There you go. Can you, let me see. Can you see me now?
You've never looked better.
Thanks. Can you see me or no?
No. We hear you, though.
I can see myself.
Well, you could, Tommy on too?
Tommy's on, yeah.
Is TK the 673 phone number?
He's down in Norwalk. Probably it's him.
I'll tell you in a second. It is, yes, that's Tommy Keegan.
Okay, I will move him in and rename him.
Good morning.
He's there. That's him.
Tommy, how are you?
I'm good, Fred. Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Thanks for coming on and presenting this request for a road closure.
Okay, you want me to start?
Yeah, there you are.
So on September 19th, we're requesting that we're basically going to do the parade that we couldn't do last year. It's pretty much the same. The added change this year is that we're going to also be celebrating the Greenwich Police Department's 125th anniversary. The main reason for adding that to the agenda for the parade is that it's going to allow me to get more police departments involved, and police departments are free. You know, if I get a police band to come, they don't charge me money. If you get a bagpipe band to come, sometimes they want a thousand or $2,000 to play. But I can get a whole ton of police and fire to come for a police event for nothing. So the idea is that, you know, we have a very, you know, we're doing some minor fundraising through COP, which is the Combined Organization of Police. And it's a 501(c)(3), so it's all tax deductible. And they're like a brother organization with the Greenwich Police Emerald Society. And so those two organizations combined, we're going to be throwing this event. It's going to be a mirror image of what we did last time. Big parade, we're going to go down Greenwich Avenue, make a right on Railroad. At the intersection of Arch and Railroad, all the vehicles will break off and go to the Horse Neck Lot and park. All the marchers will make a right onto Arch Street and make a left at the Muse. Right, perfect. So they're going to make a left at the Muse and go behind Town Hall into the field, the Board of Ed Field back there. Where we're going to have food trucks, actually tents, food tents on the track. We're going to have food trucks up in the park, on the Board of Ed parking lot, where all the, like the hot dog truck parks now, near the park. And we're going to have bagpipe bands performing, Celtic dance groups performing on temporary stage there. I hope to have the smaller of the two showmobiles. We're going to be, so it's going to be a big family event. Everyone's invited. There's no charge. And I'm going to invite, just like we did last year, we're going to invite, you know, the main honorees of the parade are going to be the hospital and ambulance workers and first responders that helped us through the pandemic. And, you know, so it should be, it should be a big event. I had, last year, I had like the NYPD mounted park police on order and a police helicopter. I was going to have about 100 motorcycles start the parade, and it was going to be huge. So, but there was no competition last year. But this year, there's a little more competition, so I'm not sure what I can get. But we're going to work on whatever we can get to make this a, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, you guys said like, start slow baby steps. I'm going right to giant steps. So we're going to go big. Go big or go home. So.
Well, we're excited. We're excited. TK?
Yes, sir. No, just to follow Captain Bonney's lead, this is not something that we as a police department haven't done in the past, managing traffic. There's a plan in place. We will manage all the traffic, as you're well aware. And we just expect it to be a great celebration for the town, for the town's police department, which is my family's business, by the way. And I'm looking forward to it. I think Jim is doing a great job with it. It's not, I can't think of a downside to this at all, Fred. And just looking forward to it, looking forward to working on it and having a good time.
Thanks, Tommy. Yeah, we were, we were excited last year. I think last year, the date's still in my mind. It was September 13th. And we were all, you know, hoping, but we kind of knew that it was a long shot. So, you know, the waiting another year, I think, is, you know, we had to do it. And, you know, it'll still be warm weather, and hopefully by that time, we will have achieved herd immunity. And it just, I think it's all aligning just right now for this. But, yeah, I mean, do we have any, I know you're still working on it, Captain Bonney, but roughly, I mean, how many attendees do you think you may get?
So I still have the spreadsheet. I made a giant spreadsheet last year of all of the people that I contacted, who was a maybe. You know, even, I had a little, I had a bunch of maybes because they weren't sure about the pandemic either. But I ended up obviously having to make the call at the end to cancel everything. So I think everyone understood. But I had 13 bagpipe bands. I had about a dozen honor guards. And all of the, I went to all of the local supermarkets. Because, you know, when the pandemic hit and everyone was at home hiding, the supermarket employees, some of them, like, you know, very low wage earners were coming in here every day and working and getting everyone fed. And, you know, so I invited all of the supermarkets. And I wanted to have like, you know, a stop-and-shop truck with all the employees behind and marching in the parade with flags. You know, I was going to give everyone a flag from their individual store. And so I had all of the supermarkets in town involved. They were very excited about it. They were surprised that actually anyone would have a parade for them. And so they were excited about that. Obviously, Gems, Gems is going to be a big, you know, they're going to be supported greatly during it. I also spoke to a very, a bunch of doctors. I had dealt with the hospital. So all, you know, everyone was pretty much on board, you know. But again, they're waiting for the final approval. I understand there's a 45-day approval window, which is fine. As long as you guys say to go ahead with it, I'll start booking it again. And if I have to cancel it, I'll cancel it. You know, we did it once. But I think we have a much better chance of it happening this year than we did last year. Part of the deal last year was, you know, I prepared a budget. I sent out fundraising letters to a bunch of big corporations and organizations. And, you know, I'm trying to make it as safe as possible. You know, we were considering providing masks for people for the parade, this and that, you know, whatever we could do. Social distancing, whatever needs to be done, I think we're going to do. But I'm hoping that by that time, an outdoor event will be, you know, well, I mean, the town party is going to be on the 4th. I'm talking about the 19th. You know, the town party is booking all this bigger, you know, they spend a lot of money booking talent. And so I'm hoping that it goes off, you know.
You and many others. Yeah, and I also, we talked about the people who kept us safe by keeping our buildings clean and free of bacteria, getting them there and having them march too. I think it's just, there's so many essential workers that this pandemic really brought to the forefront. And it's a great time and a great way to say thank you to all of them for keeping people safe and putting themselves at risk, as you mentioned. So it's a wonderful idea, and it's really be a great pick-me-up for the, for the town. Bill, Lauren?
I like that idea, and it's close enough to Labor Day that you could almost parlay some Labor Day into it.
Yeah, I also, I love the idea last time around. I'm 100% supportive. I have an aside question that's not related to this, but it was triggered by the materials. I've noticed at all of the public events, Captain Bonney, you are the bagpipe player. I'm just sort of wondering, what's the success, like, not your succession plan necessarily, but how do, how do people learn to play the bagpipes these days? And what kind of education, because I haven't heard of any kids learning necessarily. I don't know whether that's part of your, yeah, police department, community outreach. But wouldn't it be great to have a little bit of a bagpipe? I love the bagpipes, so wouldn't it be great to have a bagpipe education opportunity sometimes, some to?
So I'm a member of the Greenwich Pipe Band, and we meet at Christ Church every Monday. Well, we haven't in a year. But every Monday, if you're, if anyone is interested in playing the bagpipes, once we start again, they can show up on Monday and we give free lessons. So anyone could play drums or bagpipes, and they're interested and they're willing to put the time in, they could show up on a Monday at seven o'clock at Christ Church, and we will teach anyone who comes in, and there's no charge. But, you know, it's, it takes years to get good.
Do you have any kids that are learning or any younger adults or?
Yeah, my son plays the drums, and we have a bunch of youths that play. The, my bandleader is right from Scotland, has been playing bagpipes since kindergarten. The guy's amazing. His name is Gregor. And so he, he takes some people up and helps train them the right way. But it's funny because he said, my daughter, my daughter was considering playing, and she said, well, she can use my kindergarten kilt if she needs it. You know, they, in the garden, they start playing in Scotland, so.
Well, that's good to learn. That's good.
Yeah, you know, we're bagpipers. I'm the only one.
We all love the bagpipes, but it's a, it's a very feared sound and war.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Most feared sounds in the world.
Yeah, that's why in, actually in Ireland, they play these things called the Yulin pipes, which are, you put, you put like a crank under one arm, and you put the pipe under your other arm. You have to play it when you're sitting down, because they weren't allowed to play instruments that they could play when they were standing up. They were, they outlawed the bagpipes in Ireland. Because they encouraged, they encouraged military action. So they designed these Yulin pipes that you have to sit down and play with two arms. And it would take too much time, and you couldn't bring it into battle. So little history on bagpipes, but.
It's a very, very feared sound.
So do you have any questions about anything with the parade or the plans? I got any answer you might have a question to, I hope.
No, we'll certainly stick to our, looking at things 45 days out, but we'll, we'll be working with you long before that. We're very, very hopeful. Lots of, we're hopeful even before that. But certainly pushing things back to late summer, early fall is very prudent, I think. But we're still hopeful we can get some things in the summer too. But, yeah, looking forward to working with you and TK and everybody else, and it's going to be a great day.
Well, I haven't, I haven't started advertising yet because I wanted to get through this meeting so that it would be official. But I'm going to start advertising, sending out teletypes and putting up playbills and stuff, whatever we need to do. And of course, when they, when they contact me, I'll give them the line about the 45 days. But we'll all have to see. I think everyone's pretty reasonable about that. They understand what's going to happen, so.
Yeah, and we're, listen, we're obviously will be flexible with all this stuff and make sure that we want you to succeed here. So we're absolutely, we'll work in here with you going forward on this.
Okay.
So do we need to make a motion to approve the road closure? Yes, you do. So Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the requested road closure from the Greenwich Police Emerald Society on September 19th. And the road closure is as indicated in the parade route.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion, but I'd like to amend it with the condition that if the, if the event doesn't go forward, we rescind the road closure. If that's okay with you, Lauren.
Yes. I second the amended motion.
All those in favor of the amended motion? Fred Camillo's, yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tommy and Captain Bonney. Really appreciate you coming on and look forward to work with you in the coming months to get this off the ground.
Awesome.
Thank you, everybody.
And if you could let us know when you resume your bagpipe instruction, and we can make an announcement at the Board of Selectmen meeting, and maybe some of us will even attend.
I'll send you an email. I'll send an email out. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Thanks. Thank you. Stay safe. Okay, that's good stuff. Going on to the second item is the request for Davis Avenue road closure. We have Jason Kaufman of DPW with us. Good morning, Jason.
Morning. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Fred is frozen on my end. I'm not sure if.
Yeah, he's frozen.
Should I begin?
And I have the map, if you'd like to show it at some point, or you can screen share it if we make you a co-host.
Okay, I'll, you can, I'll ask you to put it up if we want to look at it.
Thank you.
We lost Fred. We lost Fred.
Okay, good morning. Fred lost his connection and we are trying to get him back on. So please be patient. Thank you. Okay, Fred will be joining us by phone. He cannot get his internet connection back. Fred, I don't know if you can hear me, but we do have you on the line now.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, is Jason going right now?
Not yet.
We're waiting, we were waiting for your return.
All right. Okay, thanks. Jason, go ahead. I'm sorry about that.
Uh, no worries. Thanks, Fred. Good morning. Good morning, members of the board. Thanks for having me. As you see in your packet, I'm here today to request road closure for the replacement of Davis Avenue Bridge within Bruce Park. This project's been under planning and design for several years. We've, we've had several public information meetings along with targeted stakeholder meetings, specifically some of the neighboring associations and with Board of Education and Emergency Services. And I'm here today just to request the road closure for the bridge replacement, which is to occur this summer. The goal is to have the road reopened for traffic prior to September first. In the, in the essence of trying to answer some questions preemptively, one may ask why we have not considered a stage construction approach for this project where the road can stay open. There's three major concerns with a stage construction approach at this location. The first is a concern about stability of the other half of the bridge. If you were to do one half, there's currently a center pier on this bridge that will be removed and there will be a one span length beam across or beams across. So the, the designer has some concern about, you know, removing half of the bridge and having half of the bridge remain and keeping traffic passing over it. And based on the deterioration that's evident underneath, they're extremely concerned about leaving half and doing the other half. That's number one. Number two is if we did a stage construction approach, we would definitely be into two constructions, two full construction seasons. Right now, we're, we're hoping to get everything done by the end of the year with maybe some minor roadway work and landscaping in the spring of next year. So you'd have two, two seasons of construction versus one. And the last is cost of the project. Our design engineer has estimated somewhere between a thirty to fifty percent increase in cost if we were to do a stage construction approach. So for those three reasons, we're looking to close the road and have the bridge replaced between May first and September first.
Thank you, Jason. Questions? Jason? Jill?
Thank you, Jason. Can you, so this is the, the vehicle bridge adjacent to the new pedestrian bridge, correct?
Yes, correct.
Describe the design of the bridge.
Uh, the design of the bridge is to install what's called micro pile abutments behind the existing abutments. So they drill piles down behind, behind the existing abutments. They pour a cap, which is where the, it's just called the bridge seat. And on top of that goes the Brit, pre-stressed, prefabricated beams that are set into place. There's some tensioning that goes on to kind of make it one structure because they're individual beams. And then on top of that is laid slabs and then pavement in addition to roadway items such as curb sidewalks, bridge rail, et cetera.
And can you describe the curb sidewalk, bridge rail, the aesthetic element and also the width of the roadway? And the side, will there continue to be sidewalk on both sides of the bridge?
No. So there will be only a sidewalk remaining on the south side. Currently there's sidewalk on both sides. The north side now has pedestrian bridge. So there will no longer be sidewalk on the north side. There will only be sidewalk on the south side, leading from Indian Harbor Private Driveway, One Night a Drive Association to the east side of the park. The lane width will be eleven feet in both directions with a five foot shoulder and a five foot sidewalk on the south side. The overall width of the, of what's called a causeway, this is a causeway similar to South Sandwich Road. It acts as a dam as well for the pond on the north side. The overall width of the causeway will remain the same, and that was important for our permitting process. If we were to widen the causeway, and we've, we've discussed a lot of this over the course of the planning and design process and at, at both public meetings, if we were to widen the bridge, widen the causeway, be much more significant environmental impact and a more involved permitting process. Aesthetics, I'm sorry. Yes, aesthetics. The bridge will be faced with the same type of stone that is currently faced with. The bridge rail will be painted the same color as the pedestrian bridge. And other elements such as sidewalk and curbing will be granite and concrete standard for the town of Greenwich.
So just to go back, trying to visualize the, the current, I know there's a side, so you're saying you're taking away the sidewalk on the north side. Why is that?
Well, the sidewalk has now been relocated onto pedestrian bridge.
Yeah, but why would you, since, since usage patterns, why would you?
There'll be no connect, there'll be no sidewalk connections to the bridge anymore. The sidewalk connections have been permanently made to the pedestrian bridge.
Yeah, but what, so what's the reasoning for eliminating a sidewalk?
Safety. The sidewalk currently is in unsafe condition. It's narrow. It's, uh, it's sandwiched between a railing and a fence. It poses a safety concern for somebody to get pinched between it. If we were to keep a sidewalk on the north side, we would have had to widen the causeway, as I noted earlier.
And, and is there any possibility of doing a cantilevered, you know, sort of lengthening so that you wouldn't have an impact environmentally in pilings and, and with, I, I'd like to understand a little bit better what the options, what options were considered for, and I'm going to ask you next about the bicycles, right? So what's the design that's been incorporated for a broader shoulder bicycle access bike permitting for bike paths through this, this?
Yes, great question. So the reason for the five foot shoulders is, is for that purpose for bicycle access. You know, as Fred knows and you guys both know too, and we struggle with the width of roadways and, and to officially mark something as a bike path, you need the entire roadway to have the available width of five feet on both sides. We're going to be marking this as a shoulder, not as a dedicated bike path, but it will be five feet wide on both sides of the road.
And why aren't we marking it then as dedicated bike path?
Because outside the limits of the bridge, it doesn't continue for a long enough area to accommodate that.
Currently.
Currently, yes.
But, but potentially in the future, one could, you know, you're designing it so that there will be the opportunity to designate it as a bike path.
It could if other roadways adjacent to the bridge are, are, are made to withstand that, yes.
Right. And what's the width of the roadway leading along Davis Avenue leading into the bridge?
Uh, I don't have that information off the top of my head, but I, if you want me to bring up some design sheets, I could do that.
Yeah, to see whether there's what needs to be done to have a connection. And thank you, Jim, hanging on your camera.
I think that would be, I mean, I, maybe Jim may want to jump in on this, but I think that may be like a broader project scope than what's noted for the bridge.
Yeah, I think, I think the, um, the biggest challenge that we run into is once we get into Bruce Park and both Davis Avenue and Bruce Park Drive are only about twenty-two to twenty-four feet in width, which a normal travel lane is eleven feet. So we really only have vehicle travel widths on those two roads. It would cause, you know, we would have to do a significant amount of widening to the roadway within Bruce Park. We've tried to minimize the amount of asphalt that we have in Bruce Park to keep the green there. But it is something that we could look at in the future. We do have a little bit of width as we leave on the other side of the bridge, which is near where the sundial and so forth is. It, we can look at, as part of this project, maybe striping a little bit wider shoulder as we leave that. And so definitely when we did do this bridge, we did, you know, think about that with regard, with the bikes in regard to the, with the bridge itself. So.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see it drawn in actually, a commitment so that we don't end up in a situation down the road where we have these assertions that we have enough space for a bike lane, but since we're not planning for it, we're not, that it's foreclosed. So I just, I actually would be, I recognize that that there are other considerations, but in, in designing this particular section, since it is a choke point, I'd really like to see it marked out on the plans as well.
Uh, marked out with bike, with bikes or just as a shoulder?
As a shoulder to, to specify where the, how, you know, the, the shoulder width and that it's compliant with bike, with a future bike path. And I, and since we're talking about, you know, Bruce Park and since we were talking about bikes before, one of the, actually, one of the conversations, Jim, that we had last year, if we go forward with this closure, the Bruce Park Drive will not be a a route, an I ninety-five access route, correct? One of the things we talked about was a temporary bike loop. Well, I talked about, I guess I should say, let me, let me be clear. I talked about a temporary bike loop and, and and you were not convinced that if we took the interior lane of the Bruce Park drive periodically for a bike loop and, and you know, had a one-way traffic circle of sorts on the outside, that we could provide access sort of a, a restricted access point at times. I'm wondering, we could consider that since the bridge will be closed anyway, you'll have limited traffic, whether this would be a good time to do a pilot in Bruce Park.
So I have a few ideas on that and I think it would be a great opportunity for maybe you and I and sit down and think about, you know, if we were to get some of the bike people involved or, you know, the the subcommittee or the sustainability committee, we could maybe look at having a couple of like bike events maybe this summer in that area. So why don't we pull this offline and just have a conversation about this? Cause I do have a few thoughts on that and ideas and we could come up with something that might work.
Yeah, Jim, I just want to interject. I think that's a great idea and I was, if, you know, the roads in Bruce Park leading to the bridge and once you're into the park, they're not wide enough, but you certainly, there is room to, to expand and put a bike path in there, but like, Jason was saying, then you're gonna, you're gonna be putting impervious surface there, taking green away. But also if you're gonna do that, and I think it's a, it's, it's the right thing to do is to take this opportunity to have this conversation and do it on site. And then I can meet you at another time and go over it too. But the, make sure, I would make sure that you, the residents of Indian Harbor, Meets Point and Bruce Park are aware of this and get them in on the conversation because they, what we may think is a nice idea, they may not. And I have a lot of experience with events in Bruce Park over the years. Some were great and went off without a hitch and other ones people did not want. So this would be a little bit more permanent. So I think, but you know, definitely meet, go over some things, but and then if it looks promising, broaden it to bring the public in because there's, there's people that live there and they may have other ideas on it. So you, you want to bring everybody along. So that's my only concern is after you meet to flesh out some ideas, bring in the residents of that area.
Jenny, would you be able to give me permission to share? I would just like to show one thing here just to clarify something.
Or actually Barbara, you're, you're the host. You're going to have to give him permission to share. I'm just a co-host.
While you're sharing your screen, you mentioned you have the width to do a bike path, but that you need a certain length to designate it as a bike, bike path? Did I hear correctly?
Well, generally you want to like, I don't necessarily know if there's a minimum required length, but you don't generally want to just do like, this is, this would be like two hundred feet. So you don't generally want like small sections of bike lanes because then once the bicycle is leaves that area, they're in potentially in unsafe condition. Okay. Can everyone see this plan sheet?
Yes.
Okay. So as I mentioned, this is the width of the bridge here. Right through this area is the sidewalk that will remain on the south side. Five foot, six inch shoulder will be striped with a white line along the south edge, an eleven foot lane, double yellow, another eleven foot lane and another five foot, six inch shoulder on the north side. So these will be striped shoulders that could potentially, and it actually does extend up to the area that Jim was noting. So yes, we could potentially look at extending this up through this one-way area. You have wider area, you have wider widths because these. roads approaching the bridge from the west are one-way, but as Jim noted, to the east, it narrows back up to a, a standard twenty-two to twenty-four foot width. So to answer your question, um, Jill, yes, these will be striped with a white line uh, and will be totally wide enough and available in the future to be marked as a bike lane if, if that happens.
Looking at this, I don't remember seeing this part, maybe this, maybe this wasn't, was this included in the package that?
No, because generally when we uh, submit for road closures, we include just the detour. Um, a lot of this information has been presented on our town website um, for this project, a dedicated website for this project as well as uh, over the course of two public meetings um, over the past.
I'm sorry, I hadn't seen this before, so just looking at these plans, looking um, to, I want to get the terminology, I guess the um, the west of the bridge uh, where you have the Bruce Park Drive. Now, currently that section, and that's where I believe where the, the, the roadway from Indian Harbor comes in, somewhere around there, right?
Uh, the west side, yes, right here, O'Nida Drive, private, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong, I'm, I was looking at the wrong side, okay. I, I, I had it flipped, okay, so um, yeah, so it's two lane to the east. Um, yeah, so you have, so you're saying you have capacity to the west? Because it's a, a-
It's two one-way lanes to the west, there's that large island-
Yes.
Um, in this area, so these are two one-way lanes, one way approaching the bridge and one way leaving the bridge. Those two roadways reconverge to the northwest
Yep.
Uh, to a standard roadway width, but there potentially could be available with in these one-way roads to put in uh, this extended shoulder.
Right, right, okay, and then heading east, um, I'm just trying to see where the original roadway is and where your modified roadway is.
The only, the only modification we're making is in this corner right here is we are, what we've noticed is that this is a very large radius and um, and it's uh, not really tight like we would normally like to have it, uh, where there's a stop condition, so uh, just for sightlines and for, for safety, we're making this change here.
Although by doing that, you're cutting, it, it looks, I can't tell from um, this plan, whether you're moving further east, whether you're moving the sidewalk and curb out into the roadway, whether there's capacity to, um, since you're making these changes, provide that extended shoulder further up.
Not following, I'm just um-
So, so Jason, here, let me pop in, I think I understand your question, so. So we have, we're trying to match the existing road, and if you look at where it says Bruce Park Drive, about where the word park is in that Bruce Park Drive there, we're matching where the edges of the road are. And also, if you go the other direction where Davis Avenue is, we're matching where the road is there too, that's where the existing cross-section. Those are the sections we would need to widen. If we get to a point where we're looking at doing the widening in the future, we can come back in and include not just um, space in this intersection, but space moving forward on the roadway itself, we would have to do that in order to accommodate that shoulder. So um, it would be a minimal, we're not narrowing it at any point except for right at that intersection, which is a um, big safety improvement because it reduces the um, crossing time for pedestrians walking across that roadway. So that's a good, um, that's an improvement that we make to try and reduce those crossing times, it's a pedestrian safety measure that um, with the number of pedestrians that do like to walk through the um-
Well, well, let me ask you a question, sorry to interrupt you, but you've taken out the sidewalk, right? So if you, you just said you're taking the sidewalk out of-
On the, on the north side, on the north side, so on the south side, everything, we're not removing the sidewalk, the sidewalk-
Maybe I misunderstood, so on the, on the section between the uh, uh, the, uh, O'Nida, the um, Indian O'Nida Drive and Davis Avenue, you're keeping a sidewalk there?
Correct, we're keeping a sidewalk here, that leads to this crosswalk, crosses here and then connects back into the sidewalks that exist already on this side of the road.
Okay, thank you, I misunderstood that, I thought you were taking out that sidewalk.
No.
You're taking out the one on the other side of the street because it's covered by the pedestrian bridge.
It's, yes, correct.
Terrific, okay, well that, um, that's great, where's the crosswalk currently?
Uh, the crosswalk is currently down here.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Which is uh, not ideal as well because uh, it's not at the intersection. Um, it's, once cars make the turn, uh, once they make the turn, they're not usually anticipating pedestrians, it's better if the pedestrian is at the intersection.
It's a, but uh, yeah. Um, okay, it seems even from a, a driving perspective, um, the larger intersection provides, you know, a little bit, you know, it's a, it's a tight turn, otherwise, right? If you're coming in over the bridge and then you're turning right on Davis Avenue, if there's another car sitting right there as opposed to stopping further up, you're saying, so the stop, the, the place where cars stop, where's it striped to stop currently, is it?
Uh, I, I don't even know if it's striped to stop, if it is, it's way back here. Which is, it's not good for sightlines, you can't really see the approaching cars from, coming from the lot.
Yeah, yeah. I would just like, maybe, I mean, I don't know that we need to do it here right now, but maybe some time to think about whether um, you know, I, I want to make sure that whatever design we do does provide the opportunity for allowing a larger shoulder in all directions for the cyclists, especially since we already know that they use that route to go uh, east-west and um, I don't know that it's um, by designing to make it more complicated for them or less safe, whether that's the right decision at this time. I understand you're here for the road closure, but I'm uh, just commenting on the, uh, since we're saying the bicycle access is important, then our design should provide for it as well.
And yes, the bridge, the bridge does account for that, yes.
Yeah, but the, but the approaches too should account for it.
Well, as Jim noted, our, 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 our project limits don't extend too far into the park to really uh, you know, make that improvement, I think that's a separate, larger project um, that would require widening of all the roads.
Well, I don't, you know, I guess, I guess we'd want to sit down and talk about whether that's, whether it requires widening of all the roads, whether it may be just uh, allowing a big shoulder without it having being a formal bike path. Um, one could do that presumably on just one side of the road, right, as opposed to both, and then if you have a, um, if you're, if you're bringing the curbs closer into the, you know, once we do construction, it's much harder to undo it, right?
Correct. Does anybody else have any additional questions regarding the closure? I'd also uh, just point out, we met recently with uh, the board members of the O'Nida Drive uh, Indian Harbor Association to discuss their driveway and, and uh, noting to them that access to their drive will, will be maintained at all times throughout the project. There may potentially be one day where a crane uh, needs to set the bridge beams and we will be coordinating that with them, and also um, you know, if we get approved here today, uh, we will be sending, we're ready and prepared to send out notifications to uh, many, many, many properties in this area, letting them know about this closure.
Uh, so again, I guess there's a question, I mean, I thought you usually see these twice?
Uh, the ones I've proposed in the past have been voted on at, at the meeting. Um, and I'd ask, if you are looking to defer to the next meeting, I'd ask you to reconsider because we're trying to expedite this project based on lower traffic volumes due to COVID and the summer months coming up and to avoid the start of the school year next year, Board of Ed has asked us to, you know, do everything that we can to complete this and have it drivable before September first.
Um, I, I, I know you have a detour route, so let me ask you another question, do you have a um, a detour route?
Yes, let me uh, change my share here.
Since bikes do ride this route quite a bit in this, in the warmer months, are you, what are you recommending? For them, are you recommending, I mean, will they be able to cross the pedestrian bridge and then resume?
I think, I, I think our recommendation would be yes to dismount the bike, walk across the pedestrian bridge and then re, rejoin the roadway on the other side.
So-
The pedestrian bridge is significant is, um, I believe ten feet of width, so there is plenty of distance to walk the bike across in one direction plus have people coming in the opposite direction as well, so.
Um, and in terms of uh, street conditions, I mean, I remember, I think it was last summer, the conditions when they were working on um, uh, maybe it was the pedestrian bridge finishing up, they, they were horrible actually. Uh, will there be provisions in your contract to ensure that the contractors maintain safe um, conditions around the site?
Yes, there are, there are stipulations in the contract, and we're also um, going to be including, there's a section um, of roadway leading to the bridge on the west, it's the approach one-way um, that was not paved by EverSource that we are planning to pave at the end of this project so that all the roads in this vicinity will have been paved.
So you were gonna run through the detour?
Oh, can you see this here, can you see the, yeah, so the red, the red line uh, indicates the detour um, which sends cars onto ninety-five. Um, we have already been coordinating with DOT District Three uh, because putting signs on ninety-five would require an encroachment permit. They do not have any issue with this, um, and they're just awaiting uh, the approval from this board to issue their permit.
So you'll, there'll be signs on I ninety-five saying that the roads are closed, right? So that when people try to get off I ninety-five um, during the summer, heading north?
Yes, there will be detour uh, signs noting that Davis Avenue is closed.
No, I mean for people traveling on um, I ninety-five, you know, oftentimes people get off at exit three, right, cut through, when there's a lot of traffic, they cut through and, and actually on the, on the, so on the weekends, the road won't be open, right? Because this is, this is gonna be a permanent closure for four months, right?
Correct.
You have an alternative detour look, route for um, for local traffic, when I ninety-five is backed up?
Um, this is the detour route that we are proposing, that we've developed uh, with input from the community along the design process. Any other detour route would extend the travel time significantly, they'd have to go uh, you know, all the way up into uh, Central Greenwich and potentially up to Ruwan and back.
Okay, any other questions?
No, my only question was the presidential, we had marked that you'd maintain access for the residents and you answered that question, so thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Explanations.
Thank you, thanks for the questions, um. All right, um, we might as well, we have to, we're getting up against a timeline now with our other meetings, so uh, Jason, thank you so much, and Jim, thank you. Um, let's go to, onto definitely entertain a moan, a motion now.
Okay, um, Lauren Raven, I motion that we um, approve the request for the Davis Avenue road closure for the period of uh, May first to September first um, as proposed.
Jill, you're muted.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Ball's in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, that, Jason and Jim, thank you so much, appreciate that and all the work you're doing on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, before we go on to that, uh, Jill and Jim, definitely meet and talk about the Bruce Park there and we'll, we'll circle back to that and see if there's any opportunity. Um, going on to the third uh, item on our new business, uh, which is to set a date for a public forum to discuss outdoor dining, parking and general enhancement of the old Greenwich Business District. Barb, we, uh, we had circled the date, I think, it was later in eight, eight, was the twenty-sixth? That was an up, a possibility?
Double checking.
To go make sure it works for everybody's schedule.
Yes, we were looking at Monday, April the twenty-sixth.
Um, does that work, uh, Lauren and Jill?
What time, what time are you thinking of?
What, what did we do last time, when we did the one for Dr. Central Greenwich, like eleven o'clock?
That was, I believe, earlier in the morning, perhaps nine o'clock. Yeah, I think it was early morning, I, I actually will be out of town that day. Um, so depending on the time, I think I can call in.
Okay. Um, Jill, what's your schedule?
Yeah, I am, I, I'm available until two and then again after um, after six-ish, the morning is definitely better for me on that day.
So, just thinking, would, um, Lauren, with eleven o'clock, I can't even find my calendar.
I think, I think probably earlier because um, I'll probably be sort of out and about, so rather than, than disrupt the day earlier in the morn, as early in the morning as possible, I think would be better. Plus, I think it would be advantageous for the business, local businesses to have it earlier in the morning rather than join the height of the business day, especially for restaurants.
Sure, okay, um, all right.
Perhaps eight-thirty or nine o'clock?
Yeah, I'm just looking at my calendar, I have a ten-thirty, so yeah, um, how about, um, yeah, nine o'clock would be good.
All right, that works for both Lauren and Jill?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, terrific.
Yeah, and it's probably, we'll go about an hour if that, so, but we just want people to, to weigh in on them, so that would be great, thanks so much Lauren, Jill and Barb. Okay, then going on to the last item, um, is to discuss the possible amendment to local ordinance uh, regarding admittance to dogs to town beaches, now this is something that uh, we talk about all the time, uh, and the current beach season for the dogs is December first to March thirty-first, and it's four months. Most towns along the shoreline and including New York usually go about six months, I have a list of towns here, it's a, it's a bunch, and we do, there's just an article in the paper the other day that had all these towns that have six months. Um, in the past, years ago, it was aligned to, to uh, be consistent with the boating season, which was, I believe, uh, November fifteenth to April fifteenth, so even that would get you two weeks on the front end and two weeks on the back end, another month. Um, going there the last week this year, I get up real early and take my dogs there and people were going there without dogs just to see the dogs for the last few days, because they loved seeing them there. Um, I just would love to see it, you know, to, the dog owners to be able to take advantage of a, a beautiful park there, um, and just align it with other towns, um, and to give them a little bit more time uh, at the beach, there's, it's not like people are laying out on the beach on April first, they're not. Um, but uh, I certainly know some of the pushback, um, it was pushed back, you know, even when they first let dogs on there, but um, I think we have, have it under control and certainly we can uh, uh, go to great efforts and lengths to- go to great efforts and lengths to ensure that people may be coming from out of town, adhere to the leash laws and under your control that, which is the state law and then, and cleaning up. So just real quick, I know it's, it's kind of exhausted our time here today, but just to get your thoughts on it, we're not taking anything up today. Just to, to get the ball rolling on this because when I, it was posted on one of the social media sites and I told them I was going to bring this to our board and it was very, very well-received for, by lots of people, but I just wanted to get your thoughts on it.
So is this a suggestion Fred to six months? Cause right now it's four months or can we tack on time before and after? So maybe it's five months in total or you?
Yeah, I, I'm open to anything. I mean, I would shoot for the six months, one at the back end, one at the front end, but in the past.
Take it to the end of April?
Yeah. So you would do, a lot of towns start September 1st, some start October 1st, some go to Memorial Day. That's a little too late, I think. But to line it up, you know, if you wanted to do November 1st to, to May 1st, that would just get, you know, to April 30th. That would be the six months. Now, could there be a compromise and just do two weeks to align with the boating season? That's, I think any, they really, people have been asking for this for a long time and I, I made a promise that I would, you know, give it a good effort. And I, you know, we're working on it with people, you know, in our quiet conversations around town and they know they, they're, some of the pushback on it, but it's, you know, I go down there every day, early in the morning or if I can later in the afternoon. And most are behaved. Once in a while you see somebody, you know, who doesn't clean up and you mention it to them, but you also bring extra bags and clean up just in case. And I really, honestly, I was there every day. I didn't see much of that, but it's always going to be an issue. So we, it's a beautiful treasure and we want to make sure it's, it's always kept clean. We always want to make sure, also want to make sure it's available to all, including those who, who have their dogs and like to go down there. So six months, five months, right now it's currently four.
So, so I think that it's worthy of discussion. You know, I'm a dog owner as well and I certainly have heard the discussion many times, but I also think that we need to have an opportunity for public input. Some of the things that I've heard in the past is that having the dogs there interferes with the natural nesting patterns of some of the birds. And it is a sort of a bird sanctuary and we also have a population that are birders and naturalists. Bikes, dogs on leashes get in the way of people on bikes as well. So I think that there are a number of competing interests. So I want to make sure that we move forward on this thoughtfully with the opportunity that everybody has to participate in sharing their, their concerns or support. And definitely not opposed to the conversation at all, but want to be really cautious on, on what a change would mean.
Yeah, no, thank you. And I definitely, definitely want, the conversation is one that we need to have. You know, their dogs have been allowed down there for years and it's, it's worked overall very well. You're always going to have isolated incidents. I remember when I was, God, this was my last year in high school. There was an incident with a biker who was actually not behaving and was all over the place and caused some problems. So it's, it's everybody that has to be responsible. It's the hikers, the bikers, walkers, the dog owners. But that's, you know, we certainly in tandem with this, you know, I would like to present a plan for this, for us to take up, which actually enhances, you know, and addresses some of those concerns so that everybody has a little bit of buy-in and say on it. So we're, you know, we could even continue to do public hearings. But I, I can tell you that there is great support for this around town. And I'd be all ears for any, to make this happen, but to any other, you know, I don't want to say restrictions, but things, protocols put in place to make sure that people do the right thing. And that, you know, we have the flashing sign at the beach, you know, sometimes we change it to say, wear, don't forget, forget to wear a mask. Don't forget to leash your dogs. There is, you know, that's the town ordinance. The state law is a little bit different. A former first selectman found that out when he had to go to court for his dog being off-leash, but you want me to make sure people have their dogs under control and that's it. You don't want, because there are some people who are definitely afraid. And I know Florida, the beaches there that allow them, they had that figured out. We have some other things we have to, you know, contend with, but certainly there's a way to do it. And I, everybody, including those who don't like dogs or afraid of them, they have just as much right as anybody else. So we have to make sure whenever we come to, it, it addresses everybody's.
And I think we need to also check the nesting patterns, right? I mean, I think that was one of the concerns that we heard when this has been talked about to find out when, you know.
That was in April, Jill. Yeah, I remember a former conservation director brought that up. It would, she was, if I can remember correctly, was okay with it on one end, but not the other end because of what you just mentioned.
Generally, because in addition to nesting, she was concerned about the people who don't, and children in particular who, so I think she was overall just concerned, but I, but I, I think we need to learn more about the nesting patterns and the environmental impact if we change the, the date. That is it to make sure that there's no impact that would have a residual, you know, a carryover effect.
Yeah, okay. That's very well. I think that's, it's part of what we want to do. We want to get all the stakeholders there. So thank you. I really appreciate that. Is there any other comments?
I was just gonna say, I'm open to it too, because unlike some other places, there's the park component. So it's not just the beach, it's not just the sand and the water, which makes it appealing for walking your dog. So it's a unique property that we're talking about. It's, it's not necessarily just the beach, the sand and the water. You know, unlike, you know, Byron Beach where there's the park and you can bring your dog anytime to the park.
Yeah, no, it's really, it's sad because when the last day of the dogs, they really do love it, but there's definitely, it's, it's 147 acres. There's, there is a way to make this happen and to address any of the natural wildlife there, people who don't like dogs, bikers, you know, they've coexisted and they do for, for those four months, but we want to make sure any extension incorporates that coexistence. So thank you. We'll, we'll follow up on this several times in the coming weeks and months. So thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we adjourn our regular meeting at 12:05.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Ball is in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Be well.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye-bye.